Yes, sir.
And I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Monday, July 13, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And we are doing this remotely via Microsoft Teams. Tim Corwin, may I ask you to review the meeting procedures?
Yes, sir. This is Tim Corwin with the Plan Department. Other staff members on the meeting tonight are David Brooks, the Plan Director, and Brian Vincent, I believe, is here, the City Engineer. Just have a few remarks to make regarding meeting utilizing this online format, so please bear with me. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance to the Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the planning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the planning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the July 13, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and to increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the middle lower half of the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov. That's planning@lebanonnh.gov. Or you can use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to beware of problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, it will be the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the Microsoft Teams chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Again, we ask that you not use the chat function unless you're you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded and it will be available on the city's website at lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim. I will now proceed with a roll call. I'm doing this in alphabetical order by first name. As always, please say present and indicate whether you're alone or with other people. I'm obviously present and alone. Gregorio.
Present and alone.
Thank you. Jim Winnie, I know, is away. His alternate, Karen Leot Hill.
And Leot Hill is present.
I'm alone.
Yes, thank you. I'm alone.
Joan.
Oh, sorry, microphone. Monroe is present and alone.
Laurel.
Laurel is present and alone.
Kathy.
Kathy is present and alone.
Matt Hall is not joining us. His wife is producing later this week.
Tom Martz is here and alone.
Thank you all. Our first order of business tonight is the continuation of our discussions on the Bank Street application. Karen Leo Hill has already indicated that she is recusing herself from discussion. Gregorio, I hate to put you on the spot, but we haven't had the pleasure of your company for a while. I'm not sure if you are prepared to vote on the waivers tonight. I'll let you think about that. The business that we're going to transact tonight is the waivers, unfortunately, and I want to apologize to the applicant, the public, and everyone for the technical difficulties we ran into at our 29th meeting. But I'll just remind you that at that meeting, we did hear from Tim Corwin, who explained reasons for the waiver request. What I'm going to do is ask the applicant to comment on the request, then have the board discuss the requests, and then we'll vote on each of the requests individually. And if time permitting after that, because we have a very, once again, jammed meeting schedule, we'll see if there are other parts of this agenda that we can get to. But we want to focus on getting through the minutes. So, Tim, I don't think you have anything to add. Oh, I should say, Gregorio, I will appoint you in place of, we have a vacancy on the board. Tim, do you have any further comment on the waivers?
No, I do not.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Frank Mastro, are we not to have us any say on this on these waivers?
That's correct. This is a we're moving.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. I didn't know we lived in this sort of a government.
We've had over an hour and a half of public comment. We've had over 60 written submissions, and we need to move on. So can I ask for the applicant? Is there someone from the applicant who would like to talk about these waivers?
Yes, Chairman Garland. Jolynn Salakish and Sue Reed are here. We're working together in my office. I'm going to speak, and she will chime in as needed. Do you want us to take them in order, or does it matter?
It doesn't make any difference, just all four of them, if you would.
Right. Jolynn, do you have any preference, order?
Just whichever way Tim can bring them up.
Okay, Tim, do you want to bring up, let's bring up the lighting one first. That's number four.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you, Tim. So the purpose of this waiver is to provide lighting at the where the where our driveways cross the city sidewalk. This was the request of the Bike Pad Committee. It does spill light off the lot in order to do what they asked. The amount of light that it spills is roughly the amount of full moonlight. And
And we don't have to do it, but we were trying to do what the Bike Committee, Head Committee requested. So that's why that's there.
And we don't know what the feeling of the planning board is on this.
We'll get to that when we get into our discussion.
So do we do you want me to introduce all of them and then?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you go through all four of them, and then I'll turn it over to the board members for discussion, and then we'll move to vote.
Yeah. Okay, so then waiver number one, which is the side lot lines, landscaping the side lot lines. Thank you, Tim. So this one, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, Lebanon requires, if site development allows it, the central business district, that there be a 15-foot landscape buffer on all sides of the site if the site lands, site development allows it. We provided that on the front lot line, the rear lot line, and part of the side lot lines. On the right-hand side, which is the west lot line next to the library, we have an existing driveway, which is currently at or on the lot line. We're proposing moving narrowing it up, moving it over a little bit so that there is more landscape buffer there than there currently is. But we didn't want to get our driveway too close to the historic building at number 10. So that's why we didn't provide a full 15 feet there.
We also didn't want to change the curb cut.
Or or remove the large mature maple tree, the street tree that's there. So there were several reasons for leaving the driveway roughly where it is, but moving it a little bit. So that's the one side. The other side, which is the east lot line, we had a pre-existing shared right-of-way there with the adjacent lot. It was a 15-foot.
It is.
It is a 15. Yes, it is still a 15-foot shared right-of-way. So I don't think legally we could have put the landscape buffer there.
We can't.
We can't. And so we can't put it there. And there was no provision in the site plan rules to do anything different. So we thought this was a good place to ask for a waiver. And further back beyond the right-of-way, we have provided the landscape buffer.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so next would be waiver number two, which is the more complicated one. Well, because it's more locations. Jolynn asked if this is the more complicated one. It is because it's more small locations. So for those of you who are new to the process, again, since I see we have some new names here tonight, this is the the site plan rules ask for typically a 10-foot landscape waiver around buildings, buffer around buildings. And we have as much as possible provided that, but we are working with an existing historic building. And so we were kind of making some choices about where we wanted to place the the final revised driveway locations. So there's a number of different spots on there, and I'm not sure what order Tim would like me to take those in. Because you had it, Tim, you had a diagram yourself for that one.
Yes. Let me pull that up.
There's a number of different spots, and they all have kind of different criteria. So, Tim, you had started to discuss this when when at the last meeting we got rightly interrupted because our meeting hadn't been properly noticed. So I didn't know if you wanted to continue that discussion or?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. This is Tim Corwin with the Plan Department. This is the same this is a markup of the exhibit that we were just looking at that was prepared by the applicant. I just added a few, a few additional notations here. There are three solid ovals on the left hand of the screen here. I think those are areas where the 10-foot buffer is is not satisfied or not. It's not a buffer, but the 10, the 10-foot landscaping around building requirement is not satisfied. And I don't see an exception to that requirement set forth in section 6.2 D2. In 6.2 D2, there is, there is an exception to to requiring that 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 10-foot landscaping, building landscaping requirement. And I think I did read this previously, but I think it it bears reading again. The exception provides that as part of the landscape design, functional features, and then in parentheses, such as patios, entrance walks, and loading areas that cross through the landscaped area to the building, end parentheses, may be permitted if they are necessary for the normal functioning of the building. And so again, I think that the the three areas that are circled in a solid blue line do not fall within that exception that I just read. The other two areas on on either side of the proposed 10 Bank Street building, or I should say, sorry, the existing 10 Bank Street building, it's not as clear to me that it's it's not clear. It's not 100% clear whether or not the the exception applies to those areas. And so perhaps that that might be something the the applicant can can speak to.
He's talking about the walkway.
Yes, I know. So the area that Tim was just mentioning, the the dotted areas, so to the left hand of number 10, which is our existing historic building that we're keeping, we want a pedestrian walkway to access the existing exits on that building as well as the back building. It didn't make any sense to put that a walkway on the other side of the driveway because then the walkway would have had to cross the driveway, which didn't make sense. We wanted to put it on that side. And the the walkway on the other side of the building is placed close to the building because we're trying to avoid the mature maple tree down by the street. So we had a choice of either running the walkway next to the driveway or next to the building. If it's running next to the building, then it can access the existing entryways, the three existing entryways on the side of number 10, as well as serving the rear building. And then it creates a nice area of lawn between the driveway and the building for tenants and also for, as you know, the snowbanks we get in the wintertime. So it made more sense to put the walkway on the building side rather than on the driveway side. So that's why those two walkways are are close to number 10. It does seem to me, I understand that Tim is is wondering whether walkways parallel to the wall of the building meet that exception, the same as ones that go in perpendicular. And
There's no distinction between them in the
There's no distinction between them in the in the site plan regulations, perpendicular versus parallel. So that's why we assume that, of course, they would, they would be allowed. They're part of building access and accessing the exits for the building, which are required to to access the public way. They're also, to some extent, existing existing conditions. So then the spot at the rear of number 10, which is highlighted on this slide in green, we've taken off a one-story piece on the back of the building and that is the existing building. That leaves a gap that's it's at an angle. At the narrowest, it's four foot five. And a number of people have stated that it was two foot six inches wide, but it's actually four foot wide at the four foot five inches wide at the narrowest. We would prefer to keep that as an open walkway to get through there for maintenance purposes. If we, there is an alternative. Do you want to speak to the alternative to?
Well, the alternative is to connect the two buildings, and then we don't have a buffer around the building issue because they're connected. So I guess we can ask for some feedback as to whether or not that's something the board feels strongly about.
It would seem to me the the small gap makes it easier to maintain and more pleasant for the tenants because then they can use the site more effectively. But again, we're open to feedback on that. Then going to the left-hand side, by on the left hand next to the stair tower for number eight, where Tim has put a kind of a horizontal circle. That's an area that we can modify if the planning board feels that we should. And Tim, if you want to show now the slide that I sent you today, we just sent you one slide. We showed a number of adjustments we could make if the planning board feels that it would be helpful.
Sorry, hold on a second. It's not pulling up for some reason.
Yeah.
It's like my screen is frozen here.
Oh, no.
Let me, let me X out of this for a minute. If you if you have that exhibit and can pull it up and share your screen.
I believe I do, but let me just make sure that it's the right one on this computer. Yes, so I have the correct one. Now I need to share it. Hopefully, this will work. Screen one. I know that's Tim's. Did that work? Did the drawing now pop up on the screen?
Yes, it just popped up.
Okay, good. The Microsoft Teams disappeared from mine, so I wasn't entirely sure. So this is a number of fixes that some of them are related, some of them are kind of independent. So on the upper right-hand side, you can see what would happen if we did connect number 10 and number eight. We would do the low like a one-story roof piece. So that's highlighted in yellow. Then to improve the buffer on the north side of number eight, you can see between the dumpster and the stairway, we did have, we currently have two parking spaces there. We could change that to one parking space, which would give more landscaping area next to that tall tower. It's quite shady there. So, you know, we would be have to be careful about what plants we pick. But it would give more landscaping there. Then going down to the area around them, building number 14. So there is actually enough space between the two lot lines to do all of the buffers and the buildings. But because number 10 is an existing building and an existing place, and we have existing driveways, it's been a little fussy getting the getting the right placement for everything. So it's kind of been an ongoing process. So in this one, what we're showing is we could choose to narrow up the buffer on the east side of number 10. We chose not to do that because it is an existing building there, and we would have to be careful with the existing foundations and the existing stone steps. But we could narrow that to 10 feet. To do that, we would have to take off the existing second floor exit. And you can see that kind of dotted in, and then we rebuild it. You can see that kind of a proposal, but possible shape for that in kind of the yellow L shape. That's just a preliminary idea for it. It's not really a finished design. So that was one of the location that exit was actually constraining what where we could place the place the driveway. So if we're assuming that that is is changed, then we can move our driveway over a little bit. So we studied what the fire department wanted and what their minimum driveway width could be, which was based on their fire equipment and their anchoring devices. So 16 feet is the narrowest the driveway can be, even if it's a one-way. So we said 10 feet to the building to number 10, then a 16-foot driveway, then 10 feet to number 14. So that gives you the 10-foot buffer on the west side of number 14. And then you can see dotted in in the aqua color. That is actually the auto turn path from the the that shows the fire, fire trucks turning radiuses as they come in the east driveway and kind of turn around. And that's a 35-foot fire truck as the fire department requires. We stretched it out just a foot or two up at the top where it was where it was at the narrowest. And then studied to see if we could get our 10-foot buffer on the east side. And if we swing our fire truck into the shared right-of-way, it's still on on our lot, but it's swinging over into the shared driveway right-of-way. It's still on a driveway, but we weren't being that bold before. So then we can get our 10-foot added, we can make the buffer a full 10 feet on the on the east side. So it's the auto turn diagram is very helpful in getting the buffers enlarged. And the nice side effect from from doing that is it gave us larger islands on each side of the parking right behind number 14, and not only our larger islands, but we were able to add a parking space there, which replaces
But not add, but to relocate.
We moved it over. We moved it over from the other side of the parking lot. So we didn't lose any parking in these various moves. So that's the assortment of changes we could do to to improve the buffers, especially around number 14. It does, you know, put the driveway closer to number 10.
But it still gives the 10-foot buffer because the walkway is there.
Right. Yes, both buildings still get their their 10 feet. It's just it's equal now.
Tim or David, any comments from staff?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. I just have, I just have one comment on on process, just so everyone understands. The if the 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 board, I believe, will be taking each waiver request one by one. If any one of the four or any one or more is is denied, then the board would decide, would need to have a discussion with the applicant to a certain extent to understand how long it would take to revise the plans in light of that that waiver denial. And and the exhibit that they just showed gives us a highlight of maybe some of the changes that they would propose. But they would need to go back and revise the the full plan set to to address the denial of the waiver. And so that that's going to take some time. If that's if that's what happens, if one or more of the waivers denied and the and the applicant revises the plan and res submits, then then, of course, there will be additional additional opportunities for the the public to participate. And I believe that that will be the case anyway. Just trying to respond a little bit to some of the public's concerns about about the where the board is at right now with this process.
So what our reason for showing some of these potential changes that we could make is to get some feedback from the board because we asked for waivers based on trade-offs that we thought were optimal. But based on the feedback that we've gotten from the public and the staff and the board, we're reevaluating what those trade-offs are and how they're viewed. And based on that feedback, it seems like potentially some of these changes could be things that would make the plan better in the eyes of the planning board. So that's the reason that we're we're displaying those now is to so we can get some feedback as to which of these kinds of things you would want to see more of and which of these kinds of things you're like, no, that's a dumb idea. We don't like that.
All right, let me turn it now to board members.
And we just have one more under the number 10.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so sorry. This is so this is the the one, let's see, Tim, this would be, I think it was slide 8A. Are you able to access your screen again?
You have to unshare yours.
Okay, do I have to unshare mine? I think so.
To give him shareableness.
Let's see, how do I do that? Let's see, planning board. Okay, go back on this. My apologies for Tim, are you there? Do you want to do you want to put things on?
I don't have to get up. Okay. Tim, are you able to? But you're bringing it up now.
Sue Reed, this is David Brooks.
Yes.
In the middle box on the bottom.
Okay.
Where you've got the camera. Yeah, you need to click that X. That will stop sharing. There you go.
Thank you. And I do have 8A ready to put on if Tim can't. Still having technical problems. It's better for him to be sharing his because he has more of them ready.
Mr. Chair, this is Brian.
Tim, are you still having difficulties?
We don't have Tim at all. We don't have Tim at all. Okay. We don't have Tim at all. We don't have Tim at all. Okay. No, Tim?
I think we've lost Tim.
I think we have. So Sue, if you've got 8A ready to share, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I think I just shared it. It just come up on the screens.
No, it happened.
Okay, let me try that again. I'm pushing the arrow to share it. And I'm going to the. Did that work?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hooray. So this is a close-up of the.
Now you need to click on it, I think.
Okay.
So you brought up your.
Your list.
Your list, but not the actual.
Yeah, let me give that another go. Close up. Did that work?
No, not yet.
It's, it doesn't seem to know what you're sharing. It's not sharing your whole screen. It's sharing a certain file.
Yeah.
See how it's highlighted in red? It's sharing.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna check on Tim, see what he's, see how he's doing while Sue continues to work on that.
Thank you, David.
Is that it? Jolynn, do you want to come over and put the second pair of eyes on? We've got the little share thing.
Right, but what is it sharing? Because we want it to share your whole desktop, not just.
So I wanted to show. Wanted to show this.
But you wanted to show your desktop.
Sorry.
I don't know. Right now it's showing just the list of files. So that's what's highlighted in red.
Yeah.
So go un-highlight that in red, and let's highlight something else in red. Can you just minimize that window? Don't close it. Minimize it. I'm not a Mac person.
We're also having a problem that I'm a Mac person and Jolynn is a PC person. Try and get it up. So.
So double-click on the slides. Okay.
Yep.
Can you, can you see the diagram now?
No, you're not sharing it. So you've got a diagram up, but it's not being shared.
Sure. Okay, but click on what you're sharing. That's just shares and unshares. But what's it sharing? How does it know what it's sharing? Share, share the desktop, not the window. Go back to share.
Share.
The desktop.
Yeah.
This is David Brooks.
Yes, David.
Tim has had to reboot, reboot his computer, but he showed me where 8A is, so I will try to share it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'm having the same problem Tim was. It was not sharing it. It was right there.
Is that the image you were trying to share?
Well, you gotta close yours so we can see what.
Yes, yes, here we go. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, David.
Okay, so this is, this is a close-up. And there were some photographs that went with it, but they're in the packet. We won't try and pull those up because, you know, the technical difficulties are just taking too much time. So this is the little jog in the lot line, right behind the library, right near where the trashcans are. So the width of number 8, our, our building with a parking garage in it, is set by city codes and building codes that set parking garage widths because of the depth, the length of parking space, the length of the aisle between, and the length of the parking space. And then you've got wall and insulation and so on each side. So that makes our building a certain width. We had a choice. We could either push the entire building two feet to the south and violate the 15-foot landscape around that side, which we could have pursued in the central business district zone. Or we could, you know, not have our full buffer, our full 10-foot, 15-foot buffer on the north side of the building. And we felt it was optimal to give the two feet to the neighbors on Green Street for the entire length of the lot. So that means for about 11 feet on this side of number 8, then we're two feet, we're missing two feet of landscape buffer, of the landscape skirt of the building. It's, it's right by the, by currently the.
Trash barrels.
Trash barrels for the library. And I did, when I'm reading letters today from the public concerned citizens, there was some concern that the library currently has the city pick up their trashcans. They are using, I gather, the.
Using our driveway.
Using the driveway for number 10. And we're worried that, that if this waiver were granted, they wouldn't be able to pick up their trashcans, but I, there's no.
It's quite the opposite because if we could, if we could put things close enough there and don't need a huge landscape buffer right at that corner, then they would have easier access to pull into our driveway and continue to access their trashcans through our driveway.
It's also not a spot that's terribly visible, and that was what the photo, the purpose of the photographs that we submitted last time, one of which was from approximately the, the flagpole by the side of the post office, looking down the sidewalk, the post office walkway that goes back to their parking lot. So you look through the very nice landscaping that the library has, and then you see the parking for the post office. And then you see the lot line, trees and so on behind the post office. And behind that is where this, this area is. It's not at all visible from street level at the post office and library sides, the front sides of that. The other, the other photograph was kind of a close-up of the side of the library edition, the 1986 edition, showing essentially the current conditions, the trashcans, and the unpaved driveway of number 10 that has gotten a little bit close to the, to the library, just because it doesn't have a curb. So that's where we want to have the driveway pulled away from its current condition and to be able to have that, have be a curb condition there. But we, we felt it was in everyone's interest to have this area, that this was a better place to ask, to have a narrow landscape buffer here rather than to narrow it up on the other side. Jolynn, is there anything further you'd like to say about that condition?
No, I mean, just usually the buffer is to, to screen visually things. And I guess nobody's ever really seen that part of the building, so we're not necessarily screening the library from anything because there isn't anything there. I mean, the windows are way up high and there's just some trash barrels there that we'd be trying to screen our building from.
All right, thank you, ladies. Let me turn to board members.
Did, did you want to do waiver number?
Oh, I'm sorry, there is another waiver, isn't there?
There's another waiver. We, we don't want to admit everything.
That's the fire truck one?
That's the fire truck one.
Um, well, that's just the, the waiver for the, the aisle behind the building for the fire truck. But I believe we got a letter from the fire department, I believe from Dwayne Egner, indicating that he, he didn't see any reason we would need that lane. So I don't know that we need a diagram to talk about it, but we can.
The, the actual request was for the, oh, good, maybe we can get it pulled up here, was actually the wording from Dan Nash was to allow the auto turn to be, a diagram to be used to prove that there was, that there was access, there was adequate access. Yeah.
So they'd rather have, or at least they indicated to us that they'd rather be able to turn in the lot and out of the lot without having to back out of the lot, and that that would give them better access to all the buildings on the site than being able to drive in an alleyway behind a building, because they wouldn't drive in an alleyway behind the building. That's not how they would normally attack a, a building like that. So this was what their, the, the diagram that we showed with the auto turn on it is, is what they requested.
All right, thank you. I think we're done. I'm going to move to board members. Again, Gregorio, have you had a chance to consider whether you would wish to continue in this? Or would you prefer to recuse yourself or not having been present for a number of the previous meetings?
Well, yeah, I was not present for a couple of the meetings, so I feel like I don't have enough background.
Fair enough. All right. So turning to other board members.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
I have some comments about getting to an understanding of what the planning board can and cannot do. In some previous meetings that we've had, sessions of this meeting, there've been a couple of statements along the lines of this project meets all the regulations, so we have to approve it, or this project meets the height and width requirements, so it has to be approved. And I think that that's a little bit of a misunderstanding. I think a more proper statement would be if this project meets all regulations, then we'd have to approve it. Or when this project meets all regulations, we'd have to approve it. But of course, this project doesn't meet all the regulations, or they wouldn't be asking for waivers for regulations that are part of what is supposed to have been met. There's been overwhelming objection to this project or some factors of this project from the public at each meeting we've had. Way higher number of objections than on any other project that we've considered in the past couple of years. And I want to take the public's strong opinions into consideration. But I also want the public to understand that just because they object to the building dominating the Lebanon skyline, or being totally out of character with the neighborhood, or being enormous and overwhelming, those are not reasons why the planning board can substitute our preferences for what the public want. We really need to be guided by the regulations, as I understand it. And that means that these waivers that we're considering are exceptionally important. Because one of the houses on this property that's going to be demolished has been there for 150 years, and it is very likely that whatever we end up approving for this site will be there looming over downtown Lebanon for the next 150 years. So we ought to very seriously consider whether by not approving waivers, we can perhaps get this project to a point where we can say it does meet the regulations. And the main objections, as I've read them week after week after week, have been size, proximity to the buildings around it, particularly Green Street, but also the library and the post office, and the traffic and the driveways coming out onto Route 4 by a busy downtown corner. So when I look at this project, I see two city lots, each of which has had a house on it for over 100 years. But by putting 40 units on this merged property with Lebanon's habitation number of unrelated people who can live in each unit, that would give the applicant the ability to put 160 people on that property. That's taking the approximately 10 units that are there now and quadrupling it to 40, times four-person per unit. And that's out of proportion of what makes sense in a gateway site that's not sufficiently buffered. That 15-foot lane behind the number 8 that, excuse me, backs up to the Green Street properties, some of which are wood-framed buildings over 100 years old that are two stories high, they're going to be looking up four and a half stories of light and sound and towering building where for 100 years, they had a view out over a backyard and, and the hills beyond. And they could see the nighttime stars, and then there were breezes that blew through their houses, which likely don't have air conditioning. And now there's just going to be this four and a half-story wall behind them for the, almost the entire length of the block. And as planning board members, we have a responsibility to approve development that benefits the city of Lebanon. And we know that additional rental units near downtown within walking distance of transportation and the park and everything is a good idea. But we also have a responsibility to protect the interests of the existing citizens of Lebanon. And some of those existing citizens live on Green Street. If the applicant doubled the density of that site now, that would go from approximately 10 units to 20 units. And that would be 80 residents, potentially. If she tripled it, it would be from 10 to 30 units, and maybe something in that size could be designed so that there were proper buffers. There is nothing that pertains to this fairly level city lot with no wetlands and apparently no ledge on it that requires 8 Bank Street to be humongous. And when you go on Google and you look up the size of trees, the crowns of mature trees, they're 30 to 45 feet wide. Now, some of the houses on Green Street are five or six feet back from that lot line. And trees have to be planted eight feet away from the lot line, so if there's a 15-foot buffer, that only gives seven feet for the branches to grow towards this tall building. And you need about 20 in order for a mature tree of medium size to have room to grow without running into the buildings on either side. So I just think that we need to look at the the buffers as important to the quality of life, important to the landscaping, important to, you know, the quality of downtown Lebanon. And we can talk later about traffic concerns, but I, I also want to thank some citizens of Lebanon who have taken the time to write their letters to the board because I, I confess, I've learned a lot from the expertise and comments of some of the people who've written in. For example, this past week, there was a letter talking about how light affects nearby properties. And I think I would like to see a study done about how the light from four and a half stories of a building that's within 20 feet of your house is going to affect the neighborhood behind it. And someone else mentioned the, about the peak traffic count not being sufficient, and how a true traffic impact study looked at the effect of 80 cars on the surrounding streets in the neighborhood. That a traffic impact study is far more comprehensive than just counting peak traffic. And in his letter, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Nash mentioned how extremely expensive it is to build underground parking garage spaces. And I believe him. I'm certain that's very true. But there's a reason they're being built, and that is if you're renting to young couples, 100 and 160 of them, then if each of them has a car, that's going to fill up those 80 spaces, and so 80 cars are going to have, you know, it's like, it's, it's just a heavy impact, and I think rather than me trying to guess what that effect is, that I think as a board, we ought to request an actual traffic impact study and an actual lighting spill study, so we know if this building is going to have a positive or negative effect, and if it's going to be negative, that the building could be adjusted so that it would be less intrusive.
Right, thank you, Kathy. Two things, one, we need to keep the debate about traffic and light for, once we've got through the waivers. And two, I know that I've said at previous meetings that a building of 55 feet meets the requirements in the Central Business District. I don't think anybody has said anything about width, but 55 feet is the maximum height in the Central Business District. Other people on the board?
Mr. Chair, this is Laurel Davis.
Yes, Laurel.
Thank you. I would, I would like to strongly echo what Kathy Romano has just said and add a few things. I don't think that this project, as it's currently being presented to us, meets the regulation of being harmonious to the neighborhood, and I've said this before in previous meetings. And that is one of our regulations. This does not need it. There are also questions that have been raised about the timing of the issuance of the building permit, and with respect to the public announcement of zoning changes in the city, and I think we should take those more seriously and examine them. Fully, I don't think that we really have had a conversation about that. One of the presenters mentioned the the fact that the size of the garage was dictated by code and other regulations that the applicant had to follow, but I would take exception to that. I think the size of the garage is dictated by the size of the building that the applicant wishes to fill up, and the number of units will produce the maximum profit for that building, which no one is denying is an illegitimate purpose. However, the stated reason that it's code is only partially true, in my view. I cannot support any of these waivers for all of those reasons. I think that the its incumbent on the board, not only to make sure that projects meet the regulations, but provide benefit to the city. And I've, I've read in the materials that have been submitted, statements to the fact that we have a dearth of affordable housing. I don't see anywhere in this applicant's proposal anything about any of these units being quote-unquote affordable under state law. I just don't see that anywhere. So how does that apply to this project? There are just so many questions and so many aesthetic and historical objections that people have raised, that I think it's incumbent upon the planning board to take those seriously and to transcend a limited view of having to hew closely to the regulations before us. Yes, we have to do that, but some of those regulations have to do with aesthetics and have to do with how a project fits harmoniously or not into the surrounding environment. Thank you.
Tom or Joan?
So, Mr. Chair, this is Tom Arts.
Yes, Tom.
I guess I would like to echo what my two colleagues on the board have said. I would also like to point out that in addition to upholding the regulations that we, as the planning board, are mandated to do, one of those regulations is, in fact, currently that there is the ability for a fire truck to be able to get behind the building. And I understand that the fire department has come out and said that, in their mind, it's not necessary. However, if I'm on the fourth floor of that building, and the only exit I've got is that window, and I've got a 45-foot drop down to a 15-foot piece of ground behind me, I'm not going to be satisfied with the fact that a fire, a fire truck can't get behind the building, not to mention the other wooden structures that are behind that. It is one of our regulations. It still exists on our books, and as far as I'm concerned, that's what according to two of our colleagues in one of the previous meetings said that we have to do, and that is to follow regulations. Those are our regulations.
Joan, do you have anything?
I have several things. I have, I, I agree with several things that each of the previous board members have said. I have a question for Tom. Tom, were you telling us, was it in the, in our Development Regulations Review Committee about your research into the safety of, of sprinklering and was, was that what you were telling us, or was it at a previous meeting?
That's correct, Joan. And what I was able to find, according to the National Safety, National Fire Safety Association, that sprinkled buildings are 88% effective in keeping loss of life from happening. That leaves about 12 to 13% of the times that they're not. The National Safe, or the National Fire Safety Association further, however, has a little bit of a qualification on that statement about the 88%, and that is that the fire systems have to be installed correctly, they have to be maintained correctly, and they have to operate correctly. So that leaves a lot of leeway for a system to be there, but not function correctly and have loss of life. So unless there is a way in which those people can get out of the backside of that building, and to keep that fire from spreading to the neighborhood structures, I don't think this is something that we can vote in favor of.
Chair? Thank you, Tom, for, for sharing that. I also have been thinking about that, and I think about how, in other parts of the CBD, the, many of the buildings, many of the old buildings who are probably not sprinkled, they're also made out of brick and stone. And so if this building were going to be made out of brick or stone, I would feel more comfortable. But I, I agree. I, I am concerned also about exiting only on the front, and I also have questions that I would like to ask the the fire department about sprinklering systems, and theoretically, we are going to hear from them in the future, hopefully the near future. I have several other concerns about it, about the, the traffic. I think, I agree that I don't feel that a standard a standard traffic
Joan, Joan, I'm sorry to interrupt, I need to keep you to the waivers, if we could.
Okay, 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 well, the, the well, they're all, as Kathy pointed out, these things are all interrelated, so it's it's hard to stay in one without going into the others. But as far as the the, the landscaping, I feel like the purposes of landscaping is to buffer, and I feel that these pieces of of strips here and strips there, whether they're 10 feet wide or 11 feet wide or 12 feet wide, I, I, I agree. I, I think that they're insignificant, and I think that, that every time we put plants in, we're taking away from the recreation possibilities of the residents. So I also have a good deal of, of concern granting these waivers. I'll leave it at that till we get to some other issues.
All right, if I may weigh in, I have a completely different view from all four of you. And my concern is, I've been back and forth on this, debating with myself. My concern is the following. We know that the land is owned by a company that builds and rents apartments. Their objective is to do that with the current plan. We need to ask the question, what happens if we deny these waivers? And I think there are three possibilities. One is that the applicant decides that it's not worth building. Two is that the applicant comes back with a proposal, modified proposal, that shrinks the building to meet the the space requirements. Or three, that the applicant takes the obvious, but completely different approach, eliminates the two buildings on Bank Street, and uses the entire lot for an apartment building that would be 55 feet high and would use as much, and it would be right on Bank Street. That application would come under the new Lebanon District regulations rather than Central Business District. But in my view, the differences as they apply to an apartment building would not be significant. I would much rather drive down Bank Street and see two houses with an apartment building tucked behind, although it's a 55-story foot building, than seeing a 55-foot apartment building facing Bank Street.
Chair?
Yes.
It's Kathy again. I agree that a huge apartment building would not be my first choice, but I also don't think that the current proposal at Eight Bank Street is tucked behind anything. It's looming over everything. And it is really negatively impacting the people who live behind it. It, it could be adjusted. You could put two or three buildings on that site in addition to one building and have triple the amount of density that you have now, have some additional recreation space. You could meet the landscaping buffers and, and have a very pleasant gateway property that was bigger than surrounding properties, but smaller than you know, City Hall and the Ava Gallery and all these other big buildings. And, and, and be a welcome addition that the applicant could be proud of having contributed to the city. I mean, think of what Andrew Carnegie did with the libraries that he funded all across America, and they're still here and used and beautiful. This is right next door to one of those quality buildings, and it could have a similar impact to the city of Lebanon. Not the way it is now. Needs to be shaved down a little bit, and it would not be negative. It would be a positive, and the rental income from even something that's double or triple the amount of units that are there now would still be substantial.
Other board members? So what I'm hearing from the board is not a desire to pursue the I'll call them adjustments that the applicant suggested might be possible to the 10-foot debate, but rather a, a, a concern that this project should not go forward. Which is that we're all together, and I could see heads nodding rather than
Mr. Chair, this is Laurel.
Yes, Laurel.
I don't think anyone has said that the board doesn't think this project should go forward. I think that's a bit of an overstatement. I think what I'm hearing, certainly what I'm saying, is that this project has all the right in the world to go forward. It's property owned by the applicant, and if it meets the regulations and the planning board approves it, then it has a right to go forward. But it does not have a right to go forward, in my view, in its present configuration and size, which I think is what I and my colleagues have been saying. Not that kind of draconian thing of it can't go forward. I just would like to clarify that.
But, but that sounds to me like a contradiction.
No, I, I agree completely.
No, I don't think it is a contradiction.
Well, you're saying the size is too large, and yet the, our regulations allow 55 feet. So are you comfortable with 55 feet?
Well, you're trying to narrow down one aspect of the size.
Correct, correct.
That's, that's not the true extent of what I'm concerned about.
I agree. I'm just trying to take it piecemeal, to try to
Do we have to take it piecemeal? I mean
No, I'm just trying to understand what the board would like from the applicant if we reject these waivers and the applicant will have to make whatever decisions the applicant will make.
I think that that is up to the applicant.
Well, that's why I'm looking for some guidance. There's no point in the applicant coming back with a new proposal that says 55 feet, and everyone says, no, that's too big.
Yeah, but with all due respect, I don't believe that it's our job to advise the applicant on what the board would find acceptable.
And the applicant can read all the letters from the public as well as we can.
But the applicant can say, your regulation allows me to build 55 feet.
Chair Garland?
Yes, Joan.
Here, Monroe here. I think that, that that we have to be very careful that we don't try to guess how the applicant will react. I feel it's only our responsibility to look at the regulations, think about why they are there, what's there already, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then we say, here, now it's up to the applicant. We should not try to guess what their reaction is. Absolutely not. We can't do that. None of us has a crystal ball. So I think that I think that, we can't, I don't think that we can say, oh, if the waivers are all rejected, that's the end of it. No, it's not. It's up to the applicant to decide which direction she wants to go in, and, and it's not up to us to guess. And as far as what feedback, yes, I agree. We've been giving feedback at many, many meetings, and we've heard really a lot of feedback from abutters and the neighborhood, and remember, the state does give abutters some standing, and, and the neighborhood also. That's the reason why our meetings are open to the public, is so that the people who are actually living, you know, within that six-foot social distancing distance away can say, I live there 365, you know, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and, and this is my opinion. This is my experience living there, and this is my concern. So we've had the concerns of the abutters, we've had concerns of the planning board, and I think we should go ahead and, and vote on the waivers because they're asked for, and unless they're withdrawn, as long as they're still being asked for, I think we should vote on them, and then go on to the next project and, and see what is next. We've done our job for tonight.
All right, with that, Joan, I will turn it over you to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to take
I think I've exhausted the planning board.
Do we want to do all four together, or do we want to do each one separately? Okay.
Each one separately.
Okeydoke, then I'm going to take them in the order that I was given them.
Thank you.
So let's see. I have on here motion re-completeness, and I don't think that's necessarily
No, no.
Okay, so I go to the motion to approve deny waivers.
Correct.
Okay, June 20, no, well, they were going to be June 29. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board deny waiver for the application of Jolyan Salazar Kish, Planning Board Number 2019-39-SVR from the following section of the Site Reg Plan Regulations. Partial waiver from Section 6.2 Point Capital B Point 1. On all parcels subject to these regulations, a minimum landscaped area along the front, side, and rear property line shall be provided, except within the Central Business District, where proposed development of the site does not allow. This area shall be a minimum of 15 feet in width for the length of each property line, and shall total at least 20% of the entire lot area.
Any discussion?
Second.
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the second. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot the second. You're right.
I'll second that.
Who was that? Kathy?
No.
Laurel, sorry. I confuse you all the time. Apologize. So Joan moved and Laurel seconded. Discussion? So I will say I cannot vote for to deny for something that is already accepted in our rules. That just doesn't make any sense to me. So let me take, let me start with Joan.
Monroe votes yes on the proposal to deny.
To deny. Laurel?
Laurel votes yes on the proposal to deny.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes on the proposal to deny.
And Tom?
Tom votes yes on the proposal to deny.
And I vote against. And that is the five of us.
Second waiver?
Yes.
Okay. Joan Monroe moves that that the Lebanon Planning Board deny waivers for the application of Jolene Salazar Kish, Planning Board number 2019-39-SVR from the following section of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Partial waiver from Section 6.2 Point D. Landscaping around buildings shall be provided to a minimum width of 10 feet and planted with trees, shrubs, and ground cover appropriate to the architecture in order to buffer parking areas, defined entrances, provide foundation planting, and soften large expanses of walls or long roof lines.
A second?
I'll second that. This is Laurel.
Thank you. Any discussion? So this is voting in the affirmative is voting to deny. Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Tom?
Tom votes yes.
I vote against.
You forgot me.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Okay. Third one?
Okay. Joan Monroe moves that the, hold on a sec. Okay. Joan Monroe moved that the Lebanon Planning Board deny waivers for the application of Jolene Salazar Kish, Planning Board number 2019-39-SVR from the following section of the Site Plan Regulations. Section 6.5 Point B.5. Minimum access requirements shall include a 50-foot turning radius and a 22-foot fire lane at the rear of the building.
Second?
I'll second that.
Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? So again, a vote in favor is a vote to deny. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Tom votes yes.
I vote against. Joan?
Joan votes yes.
And Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
And fourth one?
Okay. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board, let's see. Deny waivers for the application of Jolene Salazar Kish, number PB2019-39-SVR from the following section of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Partial waiver from Section 6.7.2 Point B. Light fixtures shall be located, mounted, aimed, and shielded so as to not cause light trespass upon adjacent properties or onto streets or rights of way in excess of the following levels. The light intensity at adjoining streets or commercial property boundaries shall not exceed 0.5-foot candles at grade level, and the light intensity at adjoining residential property boundaries shall not exceed 0.1-foot candles at grade level.
Second?
I will second that.
Laurel, thank you. Any discussion? I don't see us voting against ped recommendations, but I will start this time with Tom.
Tom votes no on this one.
I vote no on this one. Joan?
Joan votes no.
Laurel?
Laurel votes no.
And Kathy?
Kathy votes no.
Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks.
Yeah.
I want, I want everybody to remember that the motion is to deny, so voting no is in support of the waiver.
So I was just going to ask for the waiver to have another motion to approve.
So you might want to go through the votes again to make sure everybody understands whether they are voting to deny the waiver or or not to deny the waiver.
I thought that was the case, but let me do it again. Tom, you are voting to deny?
I'm voting in favor of this waiver.
Okay, so you're voting against the motion, which is a negative motion. I'm voting against the negative motion. Joan?
The same. I'm voting to deny the denial.
Right. Laurel?
The same.
And Kathy?
Ditto.
So Joan, can I have the approved iteration of that motion?
Okay. Do I, David, do I need to read the whole thing or just the first sentence?
I think you can just read the first sentence.
Okay. Joan Monroe moved that the Lebanon Planning Board approves the waiver for the application of Jolene Salazar Kish, a partial waiver from Section 6.7.2 Point B.
A second?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Laurel?
Well, now I'm confused.
So are you voting in favor of approving this waiver?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I vote in favor. And Joan?
Yes.
So we have three that are denied and one that is in favor.
Correct.
All right, I got to turn to David and Tim. Clearly, we're going to need to give time to the applicant to digest these decisions and decide what action the applicant wishes to undertake.
Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks.
Yes.
I would like to, since the applicant presumably needs to revise plans relative to the to the waivers that were denied. I know there's been a lot of discussion at earlier meetings and tonight about the traffic study. I would like to suggest that the board also decide, if you can, whether to require something more of the applicant relative to traffic generation, because that's something that the applicant can be working on at the same time. I don't think it would be fair, with all due respect, to send the applicant to revise plans, come back at whatever time period, and then tell them to go get something else, if that were the board's directive. So if there's an opportunity to have that discussion and come to a decision about what it is, some additional traffic information, it might make sense to do that now.
All right.
A question of staff?
Hang on a second. Who was that? Kathy?
Yes.
Just, so what I'm going to do, Kathy, I was going to start with you and then go to Joan. Both of you expressed thoughts about traffic, but ask you to be specific as to what objectives you would look for in a traffic study. Would this be focused on mitigating issues involving pedestrians, mitigating issues involving cars circulating? What specifically would you be looking for in a traffic study?
The first thing I wanted to do is ask staff if they could explain to the board and the public the difference between a peak traffic count and an actual traffic impact study. I'm just actually learning a great deal about it myself, and I didn't honestly understand the difference between the two until just recently, or I would have mentioned it much sooner in this process. But I think I misunderstood that just counting peak traffic flow really didn't show with the impact of that many cars on surrounding streets and neighborhoods, which would be impacted and how, and safety issues. So maybe staff could just discuss that more clearly than I'm stating it.
This is David Brooks. That might be best answered by Brian. I don't want to put him on the spot, but.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Brian.
Okay. Sure. So what the applicant.
Sorry, just for the public, this is Brian Vincent, the city engineer.
Right. So what the public, I'm sorry, what the applicant provided here is a trip generation memo, which, like Kathy mentioned, it estimates the peak flow out of the proposed development at the peak hour, okay? And as she also mentioned, if we were to do a full traffic study on this, then it would involve intersections, key intersections, being studied in conjunction with the pre-development condition and the post-development condition. And oftentimes, there's a scoping analysis done on which intersection, intersections need to be looked at. Maybe one of the obvious ones is around the park where where the vehicles come and hit Route 4 headed toward Exit 17. Others may be in the mix, but that's kind of a scoping analysis that really should be done as part of any kind of a traffic study.
Thank you. I was thinking of that, that especially that corner near the library, and also the impact on some of the turning streets. The next turnoff of Route 4 is Elm Street, and then right behind it, Green. And those streets are not full with streets. In other words, if someone is parking on both sides of those streets, there's only room for one-way traffic. They're not wide enough for two lanes of traffic and two parked cars. So you know, will people turn right? Will people turn left? What's the impact going to be on some of those smaller surrounding streets as well as the busy intersections?
Kathy, I don't think that the objective would be answering the question, what is the impact? But going further and saying, if there were to be an impact, what mitigation would be suggested?
Well, it's called a traffic impact study, so that was why I was thinking it would.
Right, but I think that, David, correct me if you would, but I think it goes beyond in the same way that we saw with the Mount Support studies. They have led to not only a recognition that there will be impact from the traffic, but need to come up with a solution for Mount Support, La Haye, Section.
That, well, that's right. I mean, I think in my experience, a traffic study generally deals with traffic impacts, vehicle movements, vehicle operations. I've heard expressed tonight and previously that there's a lot of concern about what's going to, about the potential impacts to pedestrians in this area. And I don't know. I mean, that should, if there's a way to factor that into a traffic study, perhaps that might add to what the board is looking for. I don't know if Brian can speak to that as well.
Sure, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm not a traffic engineer, but from the studies I've seen, the focus has been primarily on vehicles. This condition, I would envision if the board sort of wanted to give the applicant some direction, if you felt that pedestrian movement was important to look at, and maybe bike movement as well, then any kind of a traffic count include observed movements relative to that. And then I think something to be considered here is, are we back to normal traffic flow today, given the pandemic situation, or is that still subdued in some way? And I believe DOT is using 2019 traffic numbers for their studies. And that could have changed. That's two weeks ago I heard that. So, but something else to consider there.
Thank you.
Joan? Expressing concern?
Right. And I agree, Brian, that I don't think that we're back to pre-pandemic traffic. I don't know whether Ava is having any classroom or I'm guessing not. Of course, we know that regular schools are not. We don't know when, we don't know if they'll open in early September like they usually do. So counting it could be a bit problematic. But I also think, I just can't believe that when there's traffic counts around where schools are, I can't believe that there isn't someone who can study that and can give input, can give professional input, meaning surely when traffic is thought about with schools, they have to think in terms of what, you know, kids walk in, parents falling off to drop them off. I mean, I can't believe that a traffic study that's done around a school is just, oh, let's count the cars. I can't, and in this case, I feel like there's the additional complication of it being a roundabout. If we could count the cars, if things were back to normal, I would want to know how many cars was around the green and how many cars was around the green and then go on to the and how, you know, how much are they speeding up, or if they're speeding up? And I also would like to know how many cars are avoiding that and going on to going on to the backstreets. I guess I would like to know how Green Street is being affected. And you're right, that may be the problem that may bring all of this to a temporal halt is the fact that that our traffic is not back to normal.
Joan, I join you, but I would want to go a step further and then hear what mitigation the traffic engineer suggests.
Well, and yet, I mean, it's what they always do. There's either traffic signals or there's blinking and.
Right, whatever it is, but that's what we would need to.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Laurel?
Following up on what Ms. Monroe just said, for cars that are going to and from this apartment building, another route to get away from going around the green will be to go down towards the senior center and the CCBA. And out through those kind of meandering parking lots behind that area out onto Hanover Street. So I would want to see what the impact, potential impact might be on that particular area of town, Spencer Street, CCBA area. Because I think that could be potentially very dangerous. And the other the other problematic traffic area, and this is certainly not the applicant's responsibility or fault in any way, is the fact that you can get on to 120 going towards Clermont from that roundabout that surrounds the green as well. And when there's a lot of traffic going around the green, turning on to 120 versus turning left on to 4 and 4A can be quite challenging. So it would be good to know what the impact on all of those turning away from the green avenues might be.
Chair Garland?
Yes.
This is Joan. Two other additions is one that when we studied the the Iron Horse project. Granted, the numbers there were a lot larger, but it had a similar problem in that potential people were coming from multiple directions. And so the Iron Horse project actually went out quite far physically from the actual application to study. I mean, quite far, like Exit 18 and other, you know, exit, I mean, Exit 20 and Exit 19 and the intersection with downtown. And granted, I hope you see my point that right here, we're not so much talking about so many cars, but we're talking about that there are already a lot of people there. How can we make it safer for the people and bike riders? You know, even though the number of cars is not huge, this. You know, even though the number of cars is not huge, this, you know, has that area gotten to be, you know, problematic? And the last thing, the second thing I would say is that we have had deaths and injuries around the green. And so that has proven that the green already has problems with safety for pedestrians. It's pedestrians, I don't know if there have been any bicyclists, I think there have been, but, I mean, there's an area where, if it's already proved to be unsafe, it doesn't matter whether you add two more cars, or three more cars, or 10 more cars. And I am really tired of hearing that people say, oh, well, it's only a few more cars, so it doesn't matter. Because a few more cars, and a few more cars, and a few more cars adds up to too many.
All right, David, does that give enough flavor as to what?
Chair, can I add just one more thing? This is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
My concern was, being only three parking places away from the corner with the library, the number of left turns that are going to try to get on to Route 4 to go around the park versus maybe taking the easy way out, as someone mentioned at our last meeting, and just turning right and then going down Elm and Green or Kimball, and, you know, trying to get into the roundabout of the park another way, so they didn't have to turn left, and what impact that would have, or what improvements would have to be made to those smaller side streets if they're going to be bearing so much heavier traffic?
So David, does this give enough flavor for?
I think, yeah, I think the applicant has heard what the board members have had to say. I do think the board needs to take a vote here.
Yes.
Because your action, the action that you are proposing to take is enabled by Section 5.1G2, the last sentence of which says that the board may, in its discretion, require the submission of a traffic impact study for developments estimated to generate less than 100 peak hour trips or 1,000 average daily trips if the board has reason to believe such development could adversely affect levels of service or have other adverse impacts. I think you've outlined some of the adverse impacts you're concerned about, but I think you should vote to formalize your discretion, discretionary act here.
I wholeheartedly agree, and I will turn to my colleague Joan and ask for a motion to require the applicant to produce a traffic study.
Okay, and I'll turn to my humble assistant, Tim, to give me some language, or suggest which direction to word it. Do I say that, Ms. Monroe, moves that for the application of Jolene Salazar-Kish, Planning Board 2019-39-SPR, have a traffic impact study done? And I feel like, I don't know whether I need to say again in terms of, I guess with the emphasis on the effect of additional cars into an area that has a lot of foot traffic, that is coming off of a roundabout, and the foot traffic is children, to the library, to the Ava Gallery, and senior citizens also in that area. And then about the effect of cars taking alternate routes to avoid it and using neighborhood roads as, what are they called, like pass-through? Or I forget what that word is. Bypass? Using neighborhoods as bypass?
Or alternates?
Or as an alternate route?
May I have a second?
Second.
That was Laurel.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is David. Could I ask the motion maker in the second to specifically reference Section 5.1G2?
Yes.
Of your site plan review regulations, which gives you the discretion to take this action?
Okay. Then right before it said, I said, to have the traffic, to have a traffic study done per, and is it site plan regulations?
Yes.
Per SPR, number 5.1, point, capital G, point 2, requiring, because of other adverse impacts of this project?
Laurel, do you agree?
Yes.
Any discussion? All right, I will lead off. I vote in favor. Joan?
Joan votes in favor.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
And Tom?
Tom votes yes.
And that is unanimous. So the last thing we need to do is see if we can figure out a date to which we continue this discussion. I think we've given the applicant a fair amount of time.
What, is that determined by us, or by when the applicant is prepared to come back to the board?
I think it's unfair to say when the applicant will be ready. So I would give more time, and we could always change it if the applicant comes back, I believe. Tim, do you have a date that we can use?
Chair Garland, could I give two other pieces of concern that might be researched? I have a concern that we've been told that, and this is Joan Monroe, that we've been told that the library has a pump that runs to keep water out of their basement. And we've been, we've had a report of at least one either in a butter or a home in the neighborhood that also gets water frequently in their basement. So I'm concerned about those two, and if any more light can be shed on that, and considering that the library is basically a city building, I should think that would be, that one at least would be easy to research.
Yeah, I think that Brian could handle that one.
Okay.
All right.
And I had one other thing. I've driven by this site many, many times, and I just, what I'm struck by is, it just, I visualize the project, and then I see the site from the road, and I just feel like, I just can't visualize it fitting there. And I guess, in a, I guess, as we've done with other projects, having a sidewalk where the building footprint is marked out would be tremendously helpful.
Let's wait till when the applicant comes back with a new proposal, perhaps?
Yes, exactly. All right, Tim, I've got a little bit of time. Do you have a date in mind?
Well, my thought is that we should at least ask the applicant how much time they think they'll need.
Fair enough. I'll turn to the applicant. Jolene or Sue?
I'm, this is Jolene. I don't know how long one of those traffic studies takes. So I don't know if Tim or Brian have an idea of how long those things take to produce, but I've never had to do one as extensively as has been requested. So I just don't have enough information to.
I think, I'm not sure that we need the results of the traffic study for the next meeting, but we would certainly need changes to your proposal.
We don't know your overall schedule of all the other projects. We've been kind of taking it the backseat to the big guys, so.
Understood, understood. But are you thinking a month, two months?
I would say two.
Two months. Okay.
This is Kathy. Can I clarify something? I may have misunderstood you earlier today, but I thought I heard you say that when the applicant comes back with a new proposal, it would be under the new January 2020 requirements.
We don't know. We don't know, Kathy. It depends on whether the applicant decides to make modifications to the current proposal, or comes back with.
Comes back with a new one. Okay, so that would be up to the applicant. Okay, so we don't know whether we're continuing a meeting or starting.
Still continue it is when the applicant comes back and we look, and the staff looks at it and says, oh, that's the same application with some tweaks, or this is a completely different application.
Well, in that case, why are we taking time at this meeting to try and fix a date when we really don't have any idea and the determination of that date rests with the applicant and their respective conversations with staff?
We can't just abandon the, we're not going to terminate it, so there has to be a forward motion. So we're just taking the date as a place marker, that's all, Laurel. The application is not end.
Well, then pick a date.
A date could be, this is Tim, a date could be Monday, September 14th. That's two months from today, which means that they would have to, the applicant would have to submit their materials sooner than that for staff review, I would say. Let me just back up for a second. They would need to submit, I mean, at least by, say, Monday, August 24th.
No, I think we need to give them more time. Jolene? Do you agree?
Yes, I agree. That's not enough time.
That's not enough time. So pick another.
So if we did, well, another month. Well, so then, I mean, we can either go to the second meeting in September, which is September 21st, or the first meeting in October.
I'd go to the first meeting in October.
Which is October 12th.
Okay.
In which case, staff would need a complete submission by, I mean, it would be nice to have it by Friday, September 18th.
Oh, that would be great.
All right. So if the board can work both those dates into the motion, that would be appreciated. Both the Friday, September 18th submission deadline and the continuance to the October. Shoot, is that, that's a holiday, so. That's a holiday, so it would be, it would be the Tuesday, October 13th, Planning Board meeting.
Are we still celebrating that holiday?
One thing at a time, Kathy, sorry. Joan, may I have a motion?
Joan Monroe makes a motion to continue the application of Jolene Salazar-Kish, Planning Board 2019-39-SPR to Tuesday, October 13th. Do I say 6:30?
Yeah, sure.
6:30 PM.
With materials to be submitted?
Well, that's usually not part of a motion.
If we could make it part of the motion, staff would appreciate it, as we've just had some miscommunication in the past as to when materials need to be.
Okay. Let's see. Materials to be submitted for review concerning the enhanced traffic study. Anything else?
No.
No, no, no.
No?
No, just the.
The application.
The modified, or the new proposal.
Okay. The modified information to review for the modified proposal?
Yeah, I think that's, does that work for you, Tim?
Yes, then I'll just add by September 18th.
By September 18th.
Thank you.
Laurel, are you seconding?
Second.
No, yes, I'm seconding.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, Joan, in favor?
Joan is in favor, yes.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Tom?
Tom's in favor.
And I am in favor. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, public. We will continue this in October. All right, moving to our next piece of business, which is Saxon Partners. And we have had some very late submissions, given that we started reviewing this application on April 13th, but in the last week, we've had some submissions. So I want to accomplish a couple of things. One, I would like to give the applicant a chance to review a letter regarding minor revisions, a letter that was submitted in response to points raised by Brian Vincent. Second, to have a discussion about stormwater. I know that that was a question raised at our last meeting. And then thirdly, and this will be a little bit of a surprise, but I just remind you that when we began this review, the governor's orders regarding how many people could gather in a group, preventing us from having a site visit, there's been a question as to whether we could now have a site visit. But that would require us having a quorum of members there. And as you can see, we're operating on a very thin number tonight. We might have one or two more, but I need to get a feel for whether a site visit is something the board would entertain. And then if time permits, I'd like to get to the pathway letter, and that's a pretty full agenda. So may I ask the applicant, I'm not sure who's there, to review the revisions that you have outlined?
Hi, it's Dave Fenstermacher from VHB.
Hi, Dave.
I assume everyone can hear me. I'm gonna share my screen. And just to respect everybody's time, I know that first one ran a little late, so I'll try to be as concise as possible, but.
Appreciate it.
So just on the phone with us tonight, the team from Saxon Partners is here, Don and Tom and Scott. I'll be on from VHB. The architects are on, Phil and Adam. And then Phil Hastings is on as well. And I think our agenda sort of lined up with what you went over, Bruce, is that we're gonna just go over real quick the supplemental information that we sent in, the stormwater overview, because that was definitely something that we prepped for, because based on what we heard at the Michaels meeting, just to try to help clarify some things for everybody. And then a chance to go over the waiver request, and I know, maybe that's something we wait till after Tim goes, whether we go one-on-one, one by one through these. But, and then as you did note, there was additional comments submitted by an abutter late last week. Our project team did have the chance to review. A number of the items are consistent, you know, with discussion points that we've had throughout the process with planning staff, with the city engineers, city departments, state agencies. And, you know, beyond that, internally, there's a lot of decisions that had to get made, you know, weighing in impacts, site location, things like that. So rather than prepare another document to address each of those comments on such a short period of time, I thought, you know, it'd be more appropriate if the board just had specific items they wanted to ask about tonight. We'd be happy to answer those, so hopefully we'll be able to address those. But I think you'll find that most of the questions they had have been addressed probably on the record at some point. So we'd be happy to walk through those. And just a few things that, for the supplemental material, the last time we did show, we talked about future parking spaces, and I think our plans were not crystal clear on where things were. So what we want to do, I prepared, I think that was actually coming from Tim, was the comment about where they were. So we just enhanced our landscape, I mean, our layout material plans to highlight the locations of potential parking. And really, at the end of the day, what we're looking for is still requesting that we provide the 306 constructed spaces and a combination of garage storage, or under the garage and surface, and then to provide for 21 additional future spaces for a total of the 325 spaces, which meets the total parking required. So we'd still, like, based on the requests from a few of the staff members to try to take advantage of reducing, asking for this reduction in parking below the parking requirements. And then another item we talked about last time was, we do have these lights there that are now the 15-footers along Mount Support Road. We did talk to the vendor. They do have these shields. So we're looking to add those shields along that property line there to, I think when we ran the photometric plan, there wasn't much of a glare down, but we wanted to make sure that we addressed that concern that some of the board members had, so we were able to take care of that. And just stormwater, and I, you know, we're talking about, I think, the confusion between peak flow and the volume. So the peak flow really is the storage and detention to match. Really is the storage in detention to match and reduce the, or reduce the peak flows to that discharge into existing design points on site. We're gonna be mitigating those to not impact downstream infrastructure, so this, this is the standard engineering practice, standard care of stormwater design. That we're really managing the peak, because that's what everything downstream is designed for. The way I was trying to think of it is, you know, if you have a shower drain sized for the amount of water coming out of a shower, no matter how long the shower is on, the flow. Will be consistently down the drain because it's sized for that peak rate. But, you know, there were some concerns by the board, and we wanted to take a little more in-depth look at this and sort of walk you through that, so. The volume is then the runoff produced by the storm event, so in our cases, we're looking at a thirty six hours, what would happen? What additional volume resulting from the new impervious on our site would be going downstream, so. That volume typically, again, is mitigated with onsite storage. If, if you have great soils, you know, some of it just recharges. So though we designed for the standard peak, we still wanted to take a look at this and see what the downstream, so. What we did is took a look at, I know, our site here. And we talked about this previously, there's this big wetlands that sits between Mount Support and Route one twenty and La Haye. And it, that ends up, the water goes there, and then the water goes into two locations from there, goes up to Mink Brook. To the Connecticut River eventually, and then down to the Meskoma River, and then that goes to the Connecticut River eventually as well, so what we have here is. Hundred and fifteen acres of wetland. So if we look at our hydroCAD and our modeling. If we just take a look at the two extreme storms, so like, let's say, a one inch storm, so over that thirty six hours. Will produce, you know, around seventy five hundred cubic feet. So what that relates to, and this is looking at it as, let's say, these are, are clogged drains and it's not flowing. As it's supposed to. As you, as you disperse that additional volume that comes in, we're looking at, you know. The minimus impacts point oh one eight inches of additional water. If you look at the hundred year storm, what's gonna happen, you know, in those really large storm events, we're still mitigating onsite with our detention. But we have, you know, a larger amount, the thirty two thousand cubic feet coming off, and again. The, the, the goal here is to mitigate the peak so that everything's flowing offsite and off the, away from the wetlands to the discharge points at the rate it is now. But if, for some reason, you know, there's an issue with those clogging, you know, we're looking still at less than an inch over that giant area, so. You know, I think, you know, I've walked through this with Brian Vincent, the city engineer, you know, as long as. You know, we're talking long term, where we're, we have onsite inspections of our stormwater features, you know. Working with Brian to make sure that these downstream ones are also getting looked at. As part of the DES AOT permit, we're gonna be keeping logs, Dartmouth College is gonna be keeping logs, I believe. Timberwinds has an AOT permit, they have logs as well, so I'm working with Brian and Tim, what's a good way to kind of keep. Keep track of these, it's at their fingertips, so it's better to track if there's issues in these areas. So, and, you know, when we're talking cumulative. You know, anecdotally, we're talking about traffic impacts, and if there is an intersection that these communally, communively were impacting, you're saying, you know. Oh, we have a quarter million or half a million dollars worth of signal upgrades that may be needed. Well, for something like this, we know, where you can take care of that mitigation onsite. I mean, just on this side of the road alone with Saxon and Dartmouth College, I think. We're looking over a million dollars in infrastructure to mitigate these issues onsite, so that's not, there aren't the downstream impacts, so. Just to kind of give some context of the, the amount of thought and the amount of. Money they're looking to invest to not impact downstream, and then take a look at sort of this volume versus peak flow, and. I'd be happy, they kind of just want, these just kind of showed, you know, to the north, we're going up to Mink Brook and down, we're going to the, the Meskoma, but. If. It would be helpful if, maybe if Brian was online to maybe just follow up with that.
Right, Brian is online. Before I turn to Brian, Dave, could you just address, because it came up, as you said, in previous meetings about. The potential impact of Dartmouth and yourselves combined. What can go wrong?
Yeah. So, yeah, we did the, the same thing, we actually ran the same calculations with the Dartmouth project as well. We're still looking at less than an inch in that hundred year storm event. So really creating these large onsite storm systems, underground storm systems, almost like underground reservoirs and ponds. You know, we're, we're mitigating those flows and those volumes that, you know, downstream. The, the peak flow will help everything go off the site appropriately, and then if the peak flow, as long as, you know, there's proper inspections and. Maintenance of these, of what this wetland is doing now and how it's discharging, then. You know, we, we'll be mitigating it with those features that we're putting in onsite.
Brian, could you comment?
Sure, this is Brian. So, couple things, this, this area, you know, it, it doesn't have good soils for infiltration. Oftentimes, what a applicant or an engineer will choose to do is infiltrate onsite if possible. That's not really an opportunity here, given the soil conditions. So what the applicant has done in this case is chosen other means and methods to mitigate peak flow off the site. And I think that kind of drives some of the cost he's talking about, you know, it's, it's large systems and they're. They're having to be built underground, he's got some open stormwater as well, detention basins. And it requires a, a pretty substantial level of stormwater treatment. And again. It's from my review of the application materials. The applicant is meeting the standard of care expected for these kinds of developments. Given his conditions that he's dealing with on the property. So, I mean. To ask for more than that would be unusual in, I think, you know, by checking these things offsite to some degree is. Maybe more than what standard practice would require, but I think it, you know, if, if it, I think the purpose of doing this was to make the board feel. And understand more readily about what the impact might be to the adjacent area. And, and be more comfortable with what they're seeing that the applicant's providing and presenting here. The other thing I might mention is. Like every project on Mount Support Road that's being reviewed or, or has come through the city. Requires New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit. New Hampshire is. Kind of, I'd say, state of the art or right there with many other states in terms of how. The level of treatment, the level of stormwater management required. For properties like this, for developments like this, that meet, meet their threshold of a hundred thousand square feet of earthwork impact. So, so they're having to meet that requirement, they haven't gotten their permit, but in order to get their permit. They're gonna have to have a rigorous stormwater management plan in place. The other thing to mention is that during construction, this project will require. An EPA SWIP under the Construction General Permit. And that is, is anything over one acre of impact, so clearly this is well over that. And they'll be required monitoring during construction to ensure that the soils are not. You know, eroding, or they're being controlled to the level of the requirement of that permit, as well as the AOT permit requirements and the city permit requirements. So, you know, there's some levels of, of review here that, that ensure. That the projects move ahead in a professional and expected manner. And to the degree that they can with these inspections.
Thank you for that, Brian. Tim, did you have any comments before I asked the board for their comments and questions on revisions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, so let me turn to board members.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy?
I have a, a number of little question, I think they're little questions, probably for Dave and for Brian. Whichever one, so I'm just going off this letter that was sent by David Fenstermacher to David Brooks. Number fourteen says, note that the city does not intend to maintain the proposed water service, and I saw that and I thought, is that. Note in there because that's unusual, or. Or is there a reason, and do we maintain it for all other similar locations?
Chair, I can take that if you like, this is Brian.
Please.
So. The purpose of the easement is to allow the city to have access to the valve system that the applicant would like to put. In close proximity to the building. We typically have the valve. System close to the, in the right of way and very close to the road, which was what we required, but as an alternative. The applicant asked if they could provide an easement for the city to access the water system. At the, at the base of the building where the valving would go. But, but the reason that we, we wanted to mention that it isn't a maintenance easement is so that there isn't any. Confusion later that the city would maintain what is essentially a private service, and. The standard in the city is that we don't maintain services, we maintain the water main.
So it's an access easement?
Correct, yes.
And then the next question was number thirteen. Where it says the applicant is working with a geotechnical engineer on the final design, and I'm just asking, as a board. Is this sufficient for us, not knowing whether they have that approval? Just trusting that even if we approve this, that they will get the approval, or?
Well, that's something that, sorry, this is Dave again, so we now have a geotech that's under contract, we're getting a contractor under contract, and as. Everyone knows this is, you know, a difficult site, so what we, what we'd like to do is, and I, I've been working through this with Brian as well, that. You know, that's something that we would have our plan approved by, by Brian. And, you know, the engineering or DPW. Prior to, you know, any, any building permit or anything like that.
So staff review and approval, I guess.
Yeah. So.
And Kathy, that, this is Brian, that would, that would be a focus on underdrain systems and any kind of perimeter drains for buildings. So that stormwater is managed after construction and during construction, and there's, there's a, an effort put in place not to get. Extensive runoff while the site is open.
I guess my question was more like, if we were to approve this without knowing anything about that, we can trust that it will. Need to be approved by you afterwards, or by someone in the state or somewhere afterwards.
This is Brian, I'm comfortable with that, but that's the board's decision, I believe. Tim, is that correct?
That's correct, Brian.
Okay, number five.
May, may I ask, on this, Kathy, what, this is Monroe, would that be a condition? Would this be put into the conditions?
Yes, it would, Joan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. So number five. Something about the closed drainage systems within the parking garage. And I, my question was, is there some sort of a filter or clean out for maintaining that? Effluent that goes out under the garage? Before.
Yes, this is Dave, it goes out to a, a tank, a separating tank, oil separating tank that can be accessed.
And maintained?
And maintained, yep.
Okay.
And we can add that to our operations and maintenance manual, that will be part of our regular inspections.
You mentioned, Dave, that there would be onsite inspections of your whole stormwater. Management system and that you keep records. Who does those onsite inspections and how frequently are they done?
It depends on what the structure is, so. I can share it when it's on, but it's like, it's between quarterly, semi-annually and annually, depending on what we're looking at, and then if we have proprietary systems in place, like the. The storm, those underground storm trap systems, those have regular ones as well, so. It's probably every three to six months, you know, we'll be out there inspecting them and.
You do that inspection, or someone from the state, or who?
It's, it would be myself or another qualified inspector that, you know, that the operator would hire.
Okay. You said something about a combination of underground stormwater storage units and open basins. Do we have any concerns about mosquito breeding and things when, when we're proposing open basins?
Well, the open basins are similar to what's out there now for standing water. They shouldn't be standing for too long. But that's something. We'll have to take a look into like what the actual, the protocol is for that, but. It's sort of just kind of standard what's out there with the, the wetlands now.
Okay, and then my. Last question here. And this came up with the Dartmouth. Site as well, just so that I can better understand this. When you say that the. Peak flow or the additional flow even from a hundred year storm is less than one inch. And that just means that. That the amount of. Rainwater, stormwater that's. Permitted to exit the site at that time, at during the peak flow time. Is. Not very much more than would normally exit the site at that time, but it doesn't mean. That the amount of water that exits the site wouldn't be more than it is before you do development, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is the, the volume, the amount of water coming out. Is gonna come out over a longer period of time, so it'll be more water, but we're mitigating the flows. So that the infrastructure downstream can handle that water. As to not impact the, the storage across the street.
So that leads to my one probably biggest concern here, and that was the testimony of, of. An official from the Timberwood. Development at our last meeting where he said that even now, before there's any real development on that site. They have a problem with the amount of water coming from that site over to their site. And if the total amount of water after the development is going to be more than that, how do we?
Well.
Basically protect them from damage?
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll have to ask them to clarify, but I thought they were referring more to the surface water coming, seeping out of the hill. And coming across the street. But I'd, I'd have to have them clarify that.
Water, wherever it's coming from, we certainly don't want it to inundate existing. Construction, so that, that's a concern.
Other, other members? All right, let me switch to a different subject, which is a site visit, I'd just like to get a sort of straw poll. As to whether members would be interested and willing to go on a site visit in the next couple of weeks. I would, I'm just gonna randomly, Joan?
I would. Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, and, and if possible, I'd kind of prefer it to be like five o'clock or sometime after the sun, sun has gone down a little bit.
Yeah, understood, we'll have to figure out, but I'm just trying to get a sense. Can we find five members that would be willing, still need to figure out what the date is and all the rest of it, but be willing to go on a site visit? Kathy, Laurel?
Yes, yes.
Gregorio, I missed you.
Yes, I would be available.
Jim Winnie will have to find out, and who'd I miss, Tom?
Mr. Chair, I would not be able to.
That's what I, I anticipate, so, and I know I've, I've asked. Matt, and he would be willing, so it sounds to me like. We have a good shot at finding a date and a time that would suit at least five board members. How would you about scheduling that? Tim or Dave, you got any thoughts?
This is Tim. We have. Staff has identified several dates within the next two weeks. That, that might work for a site visit. I suppose we, the board could. I suppose we, the board could select one of those dates and ask, ask the, the applicant if that date works for them as well. And the dates that we had, we had identified are the Tuesday, July 21st, Wednesday, July 22nd, Thursday, July 23rd. And then the following week, Tuesday, July 28th, Wednesday, July 29th, and Thursday, July 30th.
I know the latter dates would work for Matt and not the earlier dates.
Mr. Chair, this is David Brooks.
Yes, David.
I don't, you might want to also talk amongst yourselves as to whether there are certain things that you want to see or have staked out for you. Driveway entrances, some are corners of buildings and things like that. Some of that may have already been done.
But if. Dave, when I was there, granted months ago, there were stakes.
Those were the buildings. I'd have to check with the owner. I, we didn't, I didn't remove them, but I'm, that was a couple of months ago. So. We'll check. We can just, we can put them back in if, if they're moved.
Just FYI, I can't do the 28th. This is Kathy.
Does anybody have a preference?
I have, oh, I have a question on the site walk.
Yes, Joan.
Is there any way that we would be able to see, like, what the view is from the height of the, the, that, that the, the parking lot will be where it's right across the street from Timberwood? I, I don't know how forest it is there.
If I remember correctly, Dave, correct me, but near the existing house is, they'll be parking. And I think that there's a view across there. I'm trying to remember.
I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of the height difference, you know, if we can, if we look down.
Yeah. And so when we go out there, the, basically the house that's out there now, that's going to be the elevation of the first floor of the apartments. So hopefully, I'm trying to think too, if we have a, a direct shot across.
Well, there almost looks like there's a, like a woods road there.
Yeah, they do have a little, their driveway comes up.
No, there's, looks like.
It's parallel to.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some open areas. So we might be able to get some good views.
I'd like to have an idea of where the wildlife corridor comes into.
Yeah. Oh, that'd be good if you want to throw a stake there where that 300 foot is.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. How about Wednesday, the 29th? I know that's long range planning for most of us.
Works.
And what Kathy, you were suggesting later, like six o'clock?
Oh, my, even five. I'm just saying not between noon and three where the sun is.
Okay, okay. So how about five, 5:30 on the 29th? Can I have a motion to that effect?
Monroe moves that the planning board have a site walk on Wednesday, the 29th of July, starting at 5:30 of the, let's see where will I find it? Of the Saxon Partners West property at 343 Mount Support Road. Planning Board number 2020-11-SPR.
At a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laurel. David, I forgot to ask, does that give us enough time to notice this?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
Okay, good. Any discussion on the motion? Find my tracking sheet here. So let me start. Karen, I would ask you, but I suspect it will be Jim. So I'm going to skip you if you don't mind. Cause I don't want to commit Jim because you vote. So Joan?
Yes, votes yes. Monroe votes yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom votes no. I vote yes. And Gregorio?
Yes.
Yes. That's one, two, three, four. So that's five in favor and one against.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was going to suggest, since we don't know Counselor Winnie's schedule, it might be good to know if Counselor Hill could attend if she needed to.
Good point. Karen, are you still with us?
I am, Karen Leo-Hill, and I can attend if necessary. And I just would like to point out that I think it would be helpful in, since there is the possibility that I will be called on to vote on projects from time to time. I think it would be helpful if the, if the minutes could reflect when I am present for meetings. Maybe this is something that we can, I can talk about with staff separately, but I noticed there was a motion in one of the minutes recently to strike my presence from a meeting. But since part of our planning board rules of procedure do require that when an alternate is called in to vote on a project that they have to indicate that they have either been present at meetings or that they have sufficiently reviewed materials. I think it's helpful if my presence at meetings can be publicly noticed, you know, or, or taken notice of in the minutes so that that could help to establish whether I'm qualified to vote on particular applications in the future. Thank you.
Right. We'll take that up separately. I hear your point. And I'm hopeful that Matt Hall will be able to make it also. So we have a good shot of having a quorum for that evening. Thank you all. So what I would like to achieve this evening, I know that we went way over on the first. David, can you pick up on the pathways letter and let's, let's start a conversation about that?
I think it, I, it appears that the butters are on the call. If you want to have them present their own testimony. And then I can, if, if there's a need for me to respond to anything, I'm happy to do it.
Always hard to know. But yes, you're absolutely right. So is there someone from the butters who would like to speak to this letter?
Chair Garland?
Yes.
My name is David Greke. I'll follow the direction you gave at the beginning and spell my last name. It's spelled R-A-Y-C-K. And it is pronounced as if it were spelled G-R-A-K-E. With me tonight is Joe Moreno on behalf of Timberwood and Jeff Goodrich. And Mr. Goodrich certainly is known to you, and I'll let him speak to the contents of his letter.
Thank you. Mr. Goodrich?
Ah, yes, yes, sir. Excuse me. So I'm a little astonished by a bunch of things, not the least of which is the reference to late comments. I understand that VHB represented David Clem for his project. And I was delighted to see him at the 50th meeting celebrate the anniversary of the 50th meeting. So I expect that at this point, we're going to go through 48 more meetings based on the precedent that has been established. I also would like to note that what Kathy said, what Laurel said, what Tom said, and what Joan said with respect to the past applicant are exactly the concerns that my client has, whom I've represented for many years, except that the proposed project is not the size of what's proposed downtown. Rather, it's a 720 foot building that looms, and I heard that word earlier, looms 100 feet over 252 residents of an existing project. Now, having said that, I've worked for the abutter way back to Oscar's trailer park. I've been a part of the indoor practice facility for Dartmouth College that Phil Hastings represented. I've worked for a lot of folks. Barry Schuster and I helped put this whole project together from the beginning. The bottom line is, without repeating my letter, I'd like to refer to what the planning commission, the planning board members have said with respect to the last applicant. Every single one of the concerns that they've cited applies to my client, whom I've represented since the beginning. My client at the outset, this is back in the 2005 or sooner timeframe with Barry Schuster, I worked with Barry Schuster, to identify the possible density for the project, which was 460 units, tried to engage the planning board in the context of the need for housing, in the context of an appropriate site, and was essentially told by the planning board, if you don't do 252 units, we're not going to approve your project. Having said that, and I can talk about all the details related to that, and I'm not going to repeat my letter. I'm not going to repeat all the comments from the planning board members for the last applicant because those are all the concerns as they look up at a building that blocks the sun. I'm simply going to say, if the city wants to change its, its methodology for review, so we go from over 50 and 15 board meetings and years of review to three year, three, three meetings or three months, for lack of a better way to say it, and say, wow, this is late? How about some applicable standards? How about some consistency, consistency in standards? How about the board applies the same standards of the board members that were applied to the last applicant to this project? Because my client, whom I've represented for, you know, approaching 20 years, is deeply concerned about 252 residents and/or how the city will rescind its past approvals to allow 460 units because the concerns expressed by the planning board in the past no longer apply. Thank you.
I'm afraid that there are very few people on the planning board today who were there when Timberwoods went through. David, any reaction to that?
I can, I think I was here for all of the project. There was a preliminary, the, the key difference, the, the most significant difference between the Timberwood project and the proposed Saxon project is the timber one, because it was multiple buildings, was the subdivision. So the review started with a preliminary major subdivision application, which was filed in, in May of 2007. There were a couple of issues that came up during the preliminary review, one of which was, we had two different wetland delineations. One had been prepared by, on behalf of the city and one prepared by the applicant. Because they were so divergent, we ended up having to get a third, a third party peer review engineer or, or wetland scientist. That took several months to, to get through that process. There was also another, at the time, sewer issue, sewer capacity issue, which the city ultimately worked through on, on Mount Support Road and heater, not heater, Hanover Street. So that review went through January 2008. There was a final major subdivision that was reviewed in the matter of a month and a half, I believe, in the spring of 2008. Then the applicant sought an adjust, an amendment to that project to go instead of having 252 units on, in seven buildings. They proposed to do it in three large buildings, but they ultimately withdrew that application. I think it did appear before the planning board, but they ultimately withdrew that request. Came back with a, a, another version of a site plan amendment, which basically just tightened it up, tightened up the layout. And that was reviewed in a matter of a couple of weeks in the fall of 2009. That project was approved in October of 2009. That's the layout that ultimately got approved and constructed by the planning board. I'm sorry, constructed by the applicant, approved by the planning board. There were two subsequent applications associated with the project. One was to change the open space that came in the spring of, or fall of 2010, and it was denied by the, by the planning board. The, and then there was one subsequent change to a condition of approval related to the timing of, of some easements there. So the, to the best of my knowledge, the, the zoning certainly does allow more than 252 units on a 42 acre site. But more than half of it, I believe, is wetland. And so ultimately, the applicant really only had about 13 or 14 acres of buildable land that they could access from Mount Support Road. And then there was a stretch of wetland that was actually just depicted in the, in the graphic that was shown relative to the stormwater. Several hundred feet of crossing of wetlands would have been required to access the remaining upland, which is on the Route 120 side. I believe requests to DOT to access that upland area from 120 were also denied by the state because it's a controlled access right of way. So again, yes, from a zoning standpoint, they could have had more than 252 units. But when you squeeze that down to 13 or so acres, it's a pretty highly, high density project. I'm sure it could have been designed differently with different unit mix and, and different number of units per building and, and risk, and achieved more. But from what I could find, all the way back to the very first application in May of 2007, it was always 252 units. I don't recall whether there was a conceptual or any discussion about, about doing more than 252 units. Mr. Goodrich probably knows that better. So the, the, the important thing about the timing, I know Mr. Goodrich's letters reference the wildlife corridor a lot. In 2009 and eight, we didn't have the natural resources inventory. And we certainly didn't have the wildlife corridor crossing study that would, that have since been completed. So at the time, Timberwood was reviewed and for, also for the ICV and Alteria projects, we, the city, worked very closely with New Hampshire Fish and Game to assess the wildlife impacts and corridor impacts and how best to mitigate the project. That's what ultimately got worked into the design to, to have the building, to have the large 112 unit building be tucked as far south as possible, not to encroach into the wetland that exists there and to pull the other buildings a little bit as far north and, and make it as compact a site as possible. Since then, as I said, we've had an R and NRI completed by Rick Vandapol as well as the corridor crossing study. So it doesn't, I, I think it's, it's perfectly reasonable to allow and expect applicants to utilize the information that the city has generated in the intervening years in terms of its design going forward. I know that Mr. Vandapol's recommendation, he, he did cite that this wildlife corridor is one of the key ones in the city, one of the most important and certainly one of the most threatened. In his recommendations as to how to preserve that crossing, he recommended 300 feet along the north boundary of the, what is proposed for the Saxon property. And that's what the applicant is, is, is showing. The, I, I suppose if Mr. Vandapol thought it, I haven't spoken to him in, in many months. Certainly not about this project since, since the fall of, of 2016, when he completed the report. But I suppose if he thought it should have been 500 feet, he could have said 500 feet in the report. But he said 300 feet, and that's what the applicant is proposing. In, in terms of some of the other comments in the, in the, the study, I'm sorry, in the, in the. I'm sorry, in the letter, again, unlike the application on Bank Street where the grades in the neighborhood there are essentially flat, there is a 50- to 60-foot grade change between these two properties. And there's really not much anyone can do about that. Both buildings, the 112-unit building on Timberwood as well as what is proposed by Saxon, they both fit within the 45-foot height limit. So with a 60-foot grade change, then the building's going to appear 60 feet higher from ground to ground or roof to roof. If you measure from the lowest ground point to the highest roof point, it may seem to be 100 feet. But that's what the regulations allow as to height. Those are some of the thoughts and comments that I had on Mr. Goodrich's letter.
So may I comment, Chair?
Briefly, because we're unfortunately running out of time, but yes, if you would please...
Well, briefly, without relitigating, I don't agree with David, and I'm not going to use "Mr." because David, I know David. I consider him a friend. And when Treetops was proposed, staff wanted to eliminate the possibility of housing for Treetops. And yet, Treetops was accepted. So I hope that the board accepts the same standards that were addressed with Jolyn, Salazar, Kish in the context of this project because the impacts are far more significant and allow us the time to address what those real impacts are. Thank you.
All right, so unfortunately, we need to move on to another application and finish up our business. We've already achieved a site visit for later this month. David, to what extent are there, do you know of continuing discussions between the applicant and Timberwood on some of the more engineering-related issues? I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we continue to another meeting before the 29th site visit, would that be worthwhile?
Was that question, I'm sorry, this is David Brooks. Was that a question for me?
That was for you, I'm sorry, David, yes. We managed this.
I mean, I heard David Fenstermacher say earlier that they have the letter from Mr. Goodrich. I think they also received a letter this afternoon from Attorney Drake. I don't know, I would defer to them as to the extent of which they've had a chance to review the comments and may or may not be in communication with the Timberwood folks. I don't know the answer to that. Tim, I don't know if there's... My understanding is that all of the board's, I think all of the board's concerns, most of the board's concerns have been addressed but for the information that was received in the last 72 hours or so. That's free. Tim, is there anything else that needs to be talked, or that could be talked about before site visit and before the applicant has time to address the comments that they've now received?
The only thing I'll note is that it sounded like Mr. Fenstermacher believes that the answers to the responses to the points raised in the Pathways memo are already in the record. And so, you know, that...
Yeah, so this is Dave. I would say a portion of them are, but we're happy to pull together an actual response-to-comment document that can lay out our responses. So we're happy to submit that.
So my thought is that we continue this to July 27th for an hour, an hour and a half. I don't know what the agenda is that evening, Tim, in order to try to determine what progress has been made on these two points of view at that point.
Refresh my memory on this. What date is the site visit, Chair?
It's the 29th.
I don't know how everyone else feels. I'd rather go to the site before we have another meeting.
Well, that was where I was going. Kathy was trying to figure out, does it make sense to get... I think we would be, my reasoning is we'd be better educated on some of these issues and then we could see the site visit with those issues in mind.
Yeah, so this is David Fenstermacher again, and I would ask Tim, this might help us with our decision of, if there was a meeting the 27th, when he would want materials by to appropriately distribute to all of you. So that might be cutting it tight. And I want to make sure that we've appropriately addressed everything.
Yeah, and this would go to the Abutter as well, if they wish to submit additional information. I mean, I would say we would need them by Friday at the absolute latest. This Friday, the 17th.
That's very exciting, isn't it?
Chair Garland?
Yes.
This is David Drake. If I may just address the timing issue. One of the issues which I addressed in the letter I submitted today, which I want to make sure is part of the record, was that my client would like to have Dr. Vandepoel, who my client is going to engage, be able to conduct a site visit and provide further information and analysis on the wildlife corridor issue. And we had tried to arrange for that site visit. I think that he really should be allowed to conduct a site visit of his own and prepare a written report. I don't believe that he's going to be able to accomplish the report necessarily this Friday, especially if Saxon believes there's reason to deny him access. So before you resolve the timing issue, it would be helpful to know whether Dr. Vandepoel is going to be allowed to visit the site. And if so, then I would request that he be given enough time to then prepare a written report, which would be in hand with the board prior to your site visit. In which case, I think a deadline of this Friday becomes highly problematic.
Well, I'm going to leave it to you and Saxon to determine what Saxon's response to that is. We have our public site visit for the 29th. So what I am hearing is that we should shoot for a later meeting. So Tim, I'll turn to you. If it's not the 27th, it would be sometime in August.
Right, it would be Monday, August 10th.
All right.
In which case, we would need materials, really, they should be submitted by Wednesday, July 29th. But if an extra day is needed, then we can accommodate that.
All right, Joan, I will turn to you. May I have a motion to continue this planning review until the August 10th meeting?
Gentlemen, I move that Saxon Partners and West at property at 343 Mount Support Road. Next, I'm losing it, long meeting. What's my next language?
I think you can just...
Continue to, well, continue to, next Planning Board meeting on Monday, August 10th. And this is Planning Board number 2020-11-SPR. Anything else?
You could say at 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM.
Thank you for that, Joan. Laurel, are you seconding again?
I am seconding again.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Laurel, I'll start with you.
Laurel votes yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Tom votes yes.
I vote yes. Gregorio?
Gregorio votes yes.
Karen?
Karen votes yes.
And Joan?
Joan votes yes.
So that's unanimous. All right, thank you, Abutter. Thank you, Timberwood team. We'll see you on August 10th for the follow-up meeting, and we'll see some of you on July 29th, I'm sure.
And Chair Garland, just to confirm, we will be allowed to attend the site visit, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Must have masks.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just to pick up on that point. Looking through the executive orders today, there are the universal guidelines. My understanding is that masks are, I guess, recommended, preferably required. Social distancing is absolutely required, which on a 50-acre site, we should be able to find six feet between us for the time that we're out there. But I think that is all. If there's any additional information relative to the site walk that needs to be relayed to board members, we will do that and we'll make it part of the public hearing notice if we can, if we need to.
How about boots? If it's like the site next door, you'd need boots.
I would imagine appropriate footwear is whatever it is.
Yeah. David, I don't know if the city has a megaphone, but if we're spreading out, it might be helpful to have a megaphone.
I will investigate what we have. Otherwise, I'll roll up a big piece of paper.
We're going to be very spread out.
Tim, Cam?
Mr. Smith has his hand raised.
I do not know Mr. Smith. Moving on to our next...
Chair?
I think he's muted. I think he's an owner or...
He is representing Saxon Partners. You might be muted.
Figure I'm mute, Don.
Don, we can't hear you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he's muted.
Dave, do you know who that is and why he might be?
Don Smith is the applicant.
Yeah, he's the applicant.
Slide it over.
He's okay, it looks like.
All right, our next... Are we all right there?
I think we're all right.
All right. Moving to our next subject, Novo Nordisk. Tim, would you make an introduction, please?
Sure. I think the applicant is ready to present their proposal.
We need a completeness recommendation.
Oh, that's true. Sorry. You always remind me of that. Thank you. Staff has reviewed the application in accordance with the site plan review requirements, and we have recommended that the application, sorry, recommend that the Planning Board accept jurisdiction and determine that the application is complete enough to commence review.
Joan, may I have a motion to that effect?
Gentlemen, I move. So moved?
Laurel, are you seconding again? Any discussion from board members? Well, this time, let me see. I'll start with Karen.
Thank you.
Are you in favor?
Yes, Karen Leo Hill is in favor.
Joan?
Joan is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Tom?
Tom's in favor.
I'm in favor. And Gregorio?
Gregorio's in favor.
Thank you all. All right, maybe we have someone from the applicant to tell us what this is all about.
This is Justin Alexander. I'm hoping Rod Finley's here, and I'm hoping he's going to turn over and represent our application here. Rod, are you online?
He was there a minute ago.
He was there a moment ago, and I don't see him now.
Yeah, I don't know if he had connection issues. Tim, he's been in touch with you, correct? And the slides are with you? I don't know if you want to start sharing your screen, and we'll see if we get Rod back here.
All right, considering the time, let's just start without Rod, and then we'll welcome him.
Okay. This is Justin Alexander from Novo Nordisk. And I'll do my best possible, and hopefully Rod joins us here to represent us. Yeah, I appreciate you guys' time. Sorry it's gone so long.
Rod is back. Rod, are you with us?
I just rejoined. Sorry, I got booted. Just joined.
Rod, this is Justin. I was just saying I would take over for you, but I'm happy to let you have it from here.
Take it away.
Well, good. I'm glad I got back on. So I am Rod Finley from Pathways Consulting, and that was Justin Alexander from Novo. And I believe Stuart Sawyer may also be on the line from Novo Nordisk as well.
That is correct. I'm online.
So I put together a PowerPoint presentation, and Justin's going to give a quick, maybe 10-minute run-through of Novo Nordisk and what they're doing in the Upper Valley. And then I'll explain the project, and hopefully we'll keep everything to about 15 or 20 minutes, max.
Chair, do we need a motion to extend?
We might as well do it now. I agree.
No, this is Kathy. I move that we extend the meeting up 15 minutes till 9:45. I'll second.
And that was Kathy and Laurel. So any discussion? So I'm in favor. Gregorio?
Gregorio's in favor.
Karen?
Karen is in favor.
Joan?
Joan is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy's in favor.
And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Rod.
Okay, so we're going to introduce Novo Nordisk. And Justin will talk about the facility for a few minutes, and then I'm going to explain the compressed natural gas facility that sits in between two properties up at the Lebanon Air Park. So Justin, why don't you take over? And if you could advance to the next slide, that would kick it off.
Yeah, go ahead. Tim, if you can give me the next slide here. So I just want to do a brief introduction to Novo Nordisk for those of you who don't know us here in the Upper Valley. So go to the next slide there, Tim, if you could. So we are a global company. We have affiliates in 80 countries. We do sell products in 170 countries worldwide. So it is a very large international company based out of Copenhagen, Denmark. And our headquarters of operations here in the United States is in Plainsboro, New Jersey. And we have a headquarter of international operations in Zurich, Switzerland. Jump to the next slide, Tim, if you could. This is a look at the product portfolio for Novo Nordisk. Just to give you an idea, we are a world leader in diabetes care, with the largest diabetes provider, insulin provider, and GLP provider in the world. We also are in the obesity market, hemophilia market, and human growth hormone market, as well as hormone replacement therapy market. So jump to the next slide, Tim. The plant here in West Lab, as you see kind of on the left middle of the slide there, is part of a network of our production facilities throughout the world. Those exist in seven countries, a majority of them in Denmark. But there's actually a couple here in the United States, both here in New Hampshire as well as in Clayton, North Carolina, which is about 20 minutes outside of Raleigh, and then in Brazil, and France, and Russia, and China, and Japan as well. So moving forward, Tim. Just another rehash of US. We get about 5,000 employees in the US and about $8.5 billion in sales in the US here. So our West Lab facility is an integral part of this overall organization. Next slide, Tim. This is just a quick aerial view of us, of our two lots here in West Lab, up in the airport park. The lower building with the black roof is Five Tech Lot, which you'll hear. And that's on the circle there. And the upper building there is the Nine Tech Lot. We actually make biopharmaceutical products here. This site was acquired in 2014 to help meet some strati- products here. This site was acquired in 2014 to help meet some strategic capacity needs for the overall organization. And we employ about 200 people on site there in West Leb. Next slide, Tim. Another quick aerial, just to show you what we have and what we make. The five tech building down at the right hand side of the slide there is where our QC labs and our warehouses. We do have a 10 acre vacant lot way down on the corner there, the corner of Airport Road. We also make a hemophilia product in what's called Suite 1. And then in Suite 3, we actually make a product for growth disorder. We occupy about 165,000 square feet on the main campus and another 30,000 square feet down below that. Next slide. This is the operating philosophy that Novo Nordisk abides by worldwide, and they take it pretty seriously. And I wanted to introduce this because this is a kind of a segue into the project that we're going to present here for you. It's called the triple bottom line, and it consists of financial responsibility, investing in long term so that we stay competitive as a business, social responsibility, both to our patients and to our communities that we work and live in, and then an environmental responsibility to to the earth, basically, through an effort to try to have zero environmental impact from our supply of our products and our production as a company. And then I'll just wrap it up with the environmental strategy overall is it was called circular for zero. And this was introduced by our CEO, and is ambition by 2030 to have zero impact on the on the planet. And it's a pretty ambitious goal for a company of 40,000 people to try to take that on. That has production sites all over the world. So I will turn it over, Rod, and you will see a little bit about what our efforts are here. We call this a CNG facility, but our goal in this is to actually burn renewable landfill gas to power our facility in lieu of burning propane to power this facility. So with that, Rod, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Justin. So this is just a aerial photograph of basically West Lebanon. You can see the, you can see the highway, you can see the river there, and you can see the airport and that group of buildings up by the airport is the airpark. And that little pink line that you see is the is the project area in between five tech and nine tech. Next slide, Tim, please. So this is just a general project overview. So we're going to construct a precast concrete segmented block retaining wall or a ready rock type wall. And that is to replace a failing stone, dry laid stone retaining wall, and you'll see that on the plans in a moment. And then we're going to build a concrete slab to park trucks on and actually drop off trailers that have the compressed natural gas within them. And then we're going to put in a skid, a decompression skid, which reduces the pressure of the gas delivered at 4,000 PSI down to a a working pressure. I believe it's 500 PSI. And so, next slide, please, Tim. So this is a little closer view. This is, that's Technology Drive with the big cul-de-sac at the end of Technology Drive with the industrial facilities around the cul-de-sac. The black roof is five tech in the building just to below that, the large building below it is nine tech. The retaining wall shows up in kind of a purple line, and it runs along the five tech parking lot and then takes a 90 degree turn. And that retaining wall is holding great. And just below that retaining wall, we're going to build a concrete slab where we're going to fence it and park, park the, park the trucks. So that's where it sits in relation to the two properties. And by the way, working with Tim Corwin, we're merging the properties to get rid of that property line in between the two properties, so we don't have any setback issues. Next slide, Tim. This is a rendered plan. Tim was saying our plans are totally too complicated. And so I took this plan and I put colored pencil to it and put a little tree line on it. So this, this shows the cul-de-sac, the two buildings, that dark black line is the retaining wall, and that rectangle where the wall takes a 90 degrees is the concrete slab where the trucks will park. And it's actually about eight feet below the nine tech, the grade drops from nine tech to five tech. And so that wall drops about eight feet down to where the trucks would park. And so and then it's fenced and landscaped and whatnot. We'll see at the next drawing. Next drawings, please. So now this is a view, a little rotated view, actually looking north in this case. So nine tech would be in the bottom side of this plan, and five tech would be on the top side of the plan. So the trucks pull into the five tech parking lot, and they turn around where the loading dock areas are, and then they back onto the slab. And you can see three full sized tractor trailers parked on the slab. Normally, there'll be two trailers parked and no cabs. And so when you, when a truck pulls in, normally, there's two trailers full of gas parked there, and they're connected to the decompression skid, which is the rectangle behind the trucks with the X in it. And I got a couple pictures of that, so you get an idea of what that may look like. And actually, go back to that previous slide, Tim. And so, so two trucks are, two trailers are parked there at one time. When one trailer gets down to a certain PSI, pounds per square inch, another truck is on the way. There's a vertical gate that lifts in the front of it, backs in, unloads the trailer, pulls around, picks up the empty trailer and drives away. So there's always two trailers on site. And so that's how they're operated. This particular plan shows some landscaping that we are proposing. As I was mentioning, it is an eight foot drop off to the truck. So we're just proposing some limited landscape around the facility to block it from view, particularly where most people work at the at the nine tech facility. Next slide, Tim. So the picture on the very left is the view to the west, looking towards Vermont, showing the existing stone wall. And those stones are moving all around. And this is the wall that we're going to replace with a ready rock wall. And out there, you can see the, you can see the porta potty kind of at the end of the wall there, and in the pallets in the central picture. That is where the truck depot or the slab is, and the wall goes to the left of that and then takes an immediate right. That particular area is a wetland. It's a manmade wetland from development of the nine tech site and the discharge coming from the nine tech site. We have put together a full wetland application. It has been submitted to the state. We reviewed it with the Conservation Commission. And I just got comments back today from the state, a few comments to address, but we are actually affecting about 6,400 square feet of wetlands in that area. And the picture on the right is looking at a farther up on the nine tech site where there already is a ready rock wall. And you can see right, right in the center of the picture is kind of the head of the wetland area. Okay, next slide, Tim. These are just several more pictures of the area where the trucks would park. You can see the frag mighties in the central picture and in the scrubby growth there where the proposed truck depot is proposed. Next, next photo, please, or next slide, please. This is, this is a decompression skid. This happens to be in Keene. So this is the, what's just behind the trucks. And this facility decompresses the gas to a usable pressure for the facility. As Justin mentioned, all the gas is coming from the Bethlehem landfill and be and is is recaptured from, from, from the landfill and from the the gas that's produced at the landfill. And this gets to Justin's point about being a net zero on the environment. There's other things Novo is doing, like a huge solar array in North Carolina that's large enough, I believe, to power up all his facilities, I believe in the US, but maybe even more than the US.
That covers all of our US operations. It was 675 acres in North Carolina.
Yes. And so the picture on the right is, and gives you an idea of the truck, where the trucks, how the trucks park, and then this, this skid is mounted behind the trucks. So that's just an example of what it looks like in Keene. I think ours may be a little different because of the retaining wall. And then we don't have swing gates in the front. We have a lift, a vertical lift gate, like, like the one in front of Liberty Utilities on the Miracle Mile, if you're familiar with that lift gate. So we're going to have a big 55 foot wide lift gate that opens up 17 feet high. Next slide, please. Oh, this is a couple more pictures. This shows how the trailers are hooked up with lines to the decompression facility, which is the photo on the right. Next slide. So that's the end of our presentation. Hopefully, that didn't take too long. But that's what the proposal is. I have worked with Brian Vincent closely. One comment we got at staff review was to take a look at the stormwater. There is a stormwater detention facility on the five tech parcel. Brian asked me to run calculations to make sure it can handle a 100 year event. And even though that was installed many years ago, and it was oversized, really, at the time of installation, and it holds a 100 year storm event based on the increased impervious area. So I believe Brian, as I talked to him a couple days ago, he said he was, he was okay with what I did drainage wise. The rest of the plan set they have in front of you, all the details on the wall, on the lights, and there's 17 or 18 pages of plans in the package, but I wanted to keep it simple.
Thank you for that, Rod. So just to inform members, in keeping with our procedures, since coronavirus started, we're not anticipating making any effort to reach a decision on this proposal tonight. We will continue it, I believe, until the 27th in order to allow the public to become aware of it and make sure that if anyone in the public does want to participate in those discussions, they will be able to. So tonight, it's the introduction and very briefly questions, but we still have minutes to review. So, Tim, anything that you would like to add to this? Or Brian?
I don't think I have anything that needs to be added tonight. I was just going to review the waiver request for the record, but we can do that quickly at the beginning of the next meeting. And there wasn't, and Rod had covered a couple other points that I was going to mention. So I don't, I don't necessarily have anything for tonight. I don't know. Brian, do you?
Brian, do you have one?
No, no, I'm, this is Brian. I'm all set for now. I did talk over the drainage approach and design with Rod, and and what he's presented seems to be fine.
So any board members, particularly anyone that's had an opportunity to review this material that, which is to ask the question that could help us when we get to the 27th, just to expedite it?
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
I have a quick question. I'm not familiar with this type of compressed gas at all, but I guess my question is, what would be the fire or explosion risks with something like this? And is our fire department prepared with materials that would need to suppress any kind of unfortunate event like that?
Justin, you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that. This is Justin Alexander from Novo Nordisk. Yep, we've actually reviewed this with Dwayne already from the fire department. It is methane gas, so similar to natural gas. It is lighter than air. It will, it will basically rise up if there is a leak in the area. We will have fire eyes installed that are tied back to our fire.